All right, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first agenda item is a public meeting for park ordinance changes. Joe had drafted at the last meeting some changes for us, so we reviewed, and at this point, we're looking at adding additions to the park in recreation ordinance to accommodate the dog park. So I don't know if Joe wanted to briefly go over those, and then we can take public comment questions on those.
Sure, just very briefly, this, the changes made in the current draft are entirely for the air park and the dog park. We did take some, we asked the police chief for some input, as well as Bonnie Rosati, who was also at the police department, they provided some input to it, and we incorporated that into the ordinance. So it's pretty basic stuff, just, you know, no camping, no dumping at the air park. Be respectful, don't climb on the fences at the dog park, that kind of thing.
Are there questions on the changes to the park ordinance or concerns, comments? Chief?
The goal was to mimic the other rec areas that we have in town with the dog park going in, and then the goal would be like, can't drive on the, without permission. RC flyers wouldn't be stopped if they have permission to drive out and use the area. Obviously, sometimes they go over and they're camping, but it's with permission of the town. Let's try to clean it up to incorporate the similar areas at the playground and the park and the field down next to the Eagles Club. So we're just trying to be on the same page. We've never really had new ordinances up there, and I think it'd just be a tool to help maybe curb some vandalism.
Next question?
Yep, go ahead.
I noticed that park and dog park. I know beside where the dog park is, there's a regular rutted track going through the field.
On the right?
As you face, the small dog area would be on your left, right on the left of that, more towards the runway, there's a regular deep rutted path, and I know that they used to, when they had the fly-in, people would camp and drive out there, but I don't know why, I mean, I would think that would be against what the wetlands wants people to do, because there are deep tracks going across, so I don't know if that's something that has to be addressed, or...
But we can't fill them in.
No, I thought we came up with all of that.
Leave him alone.
I think people are driving up through there so that they can get, miss the RC flyers and hit the road that was started coming south from the north end.
They're trying to connect among the road.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Other questions? Anybody on the board have questions or comments?
Only had one, number 11, I'm sorry I didn't catch it last time. Now, number 11 of the ordinance, it isn't something that we changed, but to be clear, it says violation of the town's animal control ordinance, and it talks about dogs having to be on a leash all the time. And I was wondering if, just so, even though we have it taken care of on the other side, maybe we add the words after that, another sentence that says, "Control of their dogs with a leash is in no way meant to prevent or hamper the use of the fenced-in areas of the dog park." And that way, you, someone can't say, hey, it says right there, you're gonna have a leash. No, the intent was for them running free without the leash, so...
Could just shorten it up, just except within the...
Within the...
Yeah.
Or just modify the wording so you don't get in trouble in number 11.
So on page four of that, we did think of that one, number 12, which is under, no, so on page three, it says at the very bottom, "No person is in the dog, any air park or dog park shall." And then we move over to page four, number 12, it's the same thing, except that last sentence, "Control of their dogs with a leash when not in the confines of the dog park."
Okay, no, I'm just, again, saying that if someone's gonna find fault, they're gonna, they're going to look at this and say, right here, even though it says it over there, it's okay. Here it says it isn't okay, what are you talking about? I'm just...
No, I would agree.
Where, number 11 on page three?
Is the concern...
That it's saying they have to, with a leash, on the dog? It doesn't, it's just easier, we seem to go out of our way to say unless something else. I'm just saying, you ought to say unless something else, just like we do in multiple places in this ordinance here. At least that's a suggestion, if you don't think it needs to be changed, that's okay too.
Joe, page?
It needs to be changed, the same as number 12 on page four.
You want this to mimic page?
The last.
Put the same sentence you have down there, put it right over here at the bottom, and you've accomplished the same thing, and we don't need...
Someone may not read that part.
Someone's only gonna read to the first part and jump right up and take off to fix something. That's what I'm concerned about. And on page four, number 11, where we put, "This is in no way is meant to prevent or hamper the use of the pavilion planned schedule activities," it's just kind of repetitious, because up on 10, we already say, "This is in no way is meant to prevent or hamper the use of the pavilion." Don't have to say it twice, is all. I think we're cutting and pasting and probably didn't cut that piece out. Again, may sound like I'm nitpicking, but in any ordinance, I want it to be correct. Other than that, the ordinance looks very good.
Anybody else? Jeff, did you have anything?
I'm okay.
Okay. Anybody else going once? No? Is there a motion to approve with the changes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the modification to our park and recreation field ordinance to include the dog park language.
Second.
Good. Motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
I will make the changes in the signature page to the...
You gotta take out the yellow too and all that?
Yes.
Now, can we start the meeting, or do we have to wait till 7:30?
I think you can start when, if there's no other public comment, you're free to start.
All right, we'll call the regular meeting to order. Amendments to the agenda, any amendments needed?
We did have a request to add an executive session.
So I'll make a motion to add one VSA 313A1 labor relations under executive session.
Any other changes needed? So we have a motion by Glenn to amend the agenda to add an executive session for labor relations, seconded by Rod. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from October 5th.
Motion for that?
Motion to approve the minutes for October 5th, for discussion.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Carol, to approve the October 5th minutes. Changes or corrections needed?
I didn't see any.
Nope.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Jeff, you're an aye.
Yeah, I was a little late, I might need to...
We heard, or didn't hear. Five minutes for public comment. John, go ahead.
My understanding that we're under contract with our auditors for three years.
Is that what?
The auditors, if we carry, if we do our books, I have to, the town report and stuff like that.
Yes.
We're well past our end of June fiscal year, now past the middle of October. My suggestion would be to use the auditors to call for the books for the year ending, as well as doing the audit.
Is there any backstory to that, or is there...
Yep.
Okay, all right. I figured as much, but I, okay. Joe, you're moving forward with closing the books, I know there was some...
Yeah, we're on top of it. Last year's books have been closed. We had a staff member out for extended period of time, which kind of slowed that process. We have been in touch with the auditor, and they are gonna start the audit. They're gonna come in and do some pre-work. I reached out just before I went on vacation, so we are getting that moving. It is behind, and it is slowed down.
May I ask a question about the old run spent, do we have that figured?
We don't.
If we pull the books, we have the old run spent.
Things come in a little after, or a little before.
After 30 days, they aren't qualified.
That's not, that's, we don't have that number yet, John, we need to get it audited. I could give you a number, but it may be wrong, and I don't want to give out a bad number.
Okay, anything else, John? Anybody else for public comment? No, okay, thank you, John. Department head reports. Aaron, you wanna go first?
Highway side of the trucks, reported last week, we're working on getting trucks undercoated, they've all been undercoated for the winter season. The MRGP grants and aid work, minus a little bit of work possibly tomorrow, is all completed. We have inspection scheduled for Thursday with the relevant planning commission to approve the work or ask for a little bit more touch-up. Then we'll be also in the process of getting some money back from them for the work that was done for those projects. Salt bids have been awarded by the state. We're waiting for the other vendors in the area to cross-check that and see if they want to beat the state bid for that car deal Barrett Trucking received. One of the companies got back to me and verbally said that they're gonna be way higher than what the state price looks like it's gonna be. So I'm looking for a third company to come back and say whether they want to beat them or not. Hopefully, by the end of the week, they'll have that all done, if not, by the end of the week, well, as far as Joe signing contract to be state approved bid winner. And hopefully, the price is up a little bit, hopefully, we'll go into a nice, easy winter, but nobody has said that just yet, the best we're up on that. Water side...
Excuse me, Aaron? What's your outlook on salt versus brine?
Salt versus brine?
Yeah, the use of.
The use of, so the liquid we're carrying or salt and brine itself? Because the liquid that we currently have and have used is different than salt and brine itself.
Oh, no, I wasn't, I'm talking about the liquid that you use, that you've used.
The liquid we use, we're still planning on spraying the salt as it comes off the truck. It helps the salt work better, and it makes it stick to the road when it hits instead of bouncing around. Pre-treatment, we're gonna be playing with that a little bit. We did take a class, in my report last week, we took a class on liquids use, and to get a little bit more refined, we have to do some more research of our own to see how they work for us, not seven towns over and they have a different way of doing stuff. But right now, currently, we're under contract with the liquids company that we have. We have to buy so many thousand gallons a year in use to fulfill the contract for the equipment that we have on-site down at the building. So the storage tanks, the pumps and all those, we buy the amount of gallons that we're supposed to every year. That equipment is supposed to be free after this coming season.
So is that, do you still anticipate that that's gonna cut down on our salt use?
We're gonna try our best to measure, so cut down on usage and improve the performance of it, so...
Well, that's a good side effect, but I'm just trying to figure out what the impact to the budget is.
I can't tell you what it is without the season coming down.
Well, but anticipated impact, you gotta have a plan on how you're gonna treat and how much salt you're anticipating, which is...
That tells all of us with the season. I talked to the liquid guy last year, I said, look, we were short last year, he said, yeah, there's a season now for the liquid use versus a differentiation of the salt use. It all depends on what the weather throws at us. It's not, our average use sits around 600 to 750 tons of salt. Last year, we were a little over that on salt, but the liquid was way down because of the way the weather went and the way the equipment follows all the way along. So unfortunately, that's all we have is that, we run a five-year rolling average on what we're projected to use for it. Some years are way up, some years were way down, but usually, it's that fine line somewhere around about 750 tons of salt.
I'm sure we'll have a robust discussion at budget, at the budget discussion, on what the impacts are.
Back to highway then, last week, we sat through a salt, salt winter class on liquids and using the salts and other abrasives or liquids to help either improve performance or be able to reduce the cost of being able to perform. Two of the guys went through a backhoe excavator safety class, operations class. One of the gentlemen was top of the class, with four or five other towns and operators, so we did get a little bit up on some other people with that, so that's pretty cool. Water department wise, Jason Booth from Aldrin Elliott is working with us to try and put a RFP together on what we believe we need to do for work on Adam Street Bridge, the leak we have there. We had the one contractor come back with what they thought they were gonna do, and we had another contract that was gonna come, there was just too much questions of what the work's gonna entail. So Jason was down from working with the wastewater plant upgrade stuff, and we took a look at it, and he said, let's just write this up the right way so it gets done properly. So he's working on that, hopefully, we have something that for him this week, go back to some construction companies to see who can do the work for us for the best price. Guys, the water plant is working on updating curb stop locations and getting that all filed into a new book that's more updated and accurate than some of the old stuff that we have. Otherwise, up there, they weren't able to get a dive company to finally look at the intake pipes last Friday. The intake pipe out in the pond, they couldn't find any damage to it, they took video of it. Hopefully, we'll be able to see that. When they went over and looked everything, they couldn't see anything physically wrong with it that stood out to them immediately, so that's a good thing. Wastewater plants still come along, and again, same report is all. Always, equipment and stuff is getting hard to get, and keeps getting pushed back. So I think the biggest hole to bring out for a lot of progress on equipment-wise is the variable frequency drives that run the motors and the pumps down there. They'll be getting pushed back and pushed back, whether they're on a boat somewhere or they don't have the product available. I know the engineering firm is working with the vendors, trying to figure out if there's a substitute that would be more readily available, and they've made a switch so we can get them, get something sooner than later. Adam Street generator, I found it out, update for that, that's gonna be the middle of November. We went from the middle of September all summer long, and that was a good date, till just recent, within the last week, I finally got that, or heard back from the vendor, and the new ship date is the middle of November, so I'm optimistic, but not very. Hydro flushing was scheduled for this week, they got a call from A1 who does that for us, and they had a scheduling error, it was supposed to be next week, so it did not interfere much with our operations, so it's gonna be here next week, not this week to do that. Other than that, did we have any others at the moment?
Is that, that's sewer flushing?
Sewer flushing, yeah.
Thank you.
Questions for Aaron? All right, police chief, Bill, do you wanna, go ahead?
Yep, sure, October 1st, the statewide use of force policy was implemented as required, and that was established statewide from constable to state police. Everybody's asked to be on the same level. Every officer's had their first initial training on it, they've all been familiar with the policy, and we've had them do a sign-off on it acknowledging, and that's coming to their personnel files. And then, as we do our next use of force class, we'll start from that, you know, we'll do hands-on with the policy and try to further their education. The APIS fingerprint machine is up and running, in service, it's user-friendly. We can actually remote access to get mug shots off it, we don't have to use a camera anymore. Remarkably fast, from my last experience with the one that we had here with the state police, it was cumbersome and hard to use, even where I had my clerk adamantly against not, we're not using it, and then once I showed it to her, she's like, oh, it works really well. So she seems to understand the come-around to using it, and that's, we're all getting old and set in our ways, so it's tough to do change in technology, but, so I think it's gonna work out really well. It's a really nice piece of machinery. They're gonna invoice us, and then we'll send them further arrangements, but they would invoice, invoice us until they had it installed. So that was on Wednesday. Our new hire from a month ago, Chris DeVito, has been deployed to Kosovo, so he's gone for 209 days. He's a lieutenant in the Vermont National Guard, unfortunately, he's, has to go serve the country. Aaron got the police cars' oil, thank you, Aaron. We had nine arrests from 9.4, I know I wasn't here to the last meeting. We had three for driving without a license, we had one for unlawful trespass, we had one for violation of conditions of release and possession of fentanyl at the car stop. We had felony DUI, we had a wanted person, he was also driving without a license. We had one infascatified person, and one for convicted conduct at the welcome center. Beth and Hayride went over well, no issues, the bill's been submitted, we had an officer up there both nights. He said they pre-sold, so there was not the big line in the backup. So basically, people came, they had a ticket, they got on, they were good, which eliminated all problems, which was really beneficial for us to do that, that way. We assisted with the water shut-off, which was potentially confrontational, ended up being confrontational after much conversation with the individual. He complied, we assisted in moving his vehicle, shovel water out, put the vehicle back where it was. The Explorer got marked, a new car, got the markings on it, we're still waiting on a couple pieces. It's on backwater, for some lights and a siren, and once that's in, that'll be in service. Drug take-back day is this Saturday, 10/23, usually that's very successful here, and that's from 10 to 2.
Where is that?
Eighty-nine pounds, right at the police station.
At the police station.
What day is it?
Saturday. Saturday, the 23rd, this Saturday. We are, I'm doing the food drive this year, we did not do it last year during COVID, and we're ironing around November 13th, events that are very concerned, we have been talking about it to see if the van we usually, who's just still available, we used to, I sent an email today. And then obviously, just prior to coming here, we had Castle and Hatter Pursuit that ended up coming into town, went down Forester, they're rather good cliff, and hit the curb, didn't make the turn, and he's in custody, there was a warrant for him for escape, and another stack of charges, so that's what I have. This probably would have been more, but I got sidetracked for that, when I was writing it out for the board.
I almost got killed by him, just driving.
All right, questions for police chief? Thank you, Bill. Town manager report?
Chief, just to let you know, DPW has a pretty nice van, if you need to load some food in the back, it'll act it. I'm sure they'll let you use it. So I was gone most, all of last week and most of the week before, but a little bit has happened from the office. We'll start with the update on the dog park. The permit has not been submitted. I was in touch with the contractor while I was on vacation, and coordinating with Aaron and the contractor, also while I was out of the country. The contractor has just swamped, she just, it's her busy season, she said she should be able to get it submitted by November. We're working with her to do as much paperwork as we can on our end, so that way she has less to do. It'll cost us less, and it'll expedite the process. The Build Back Better Grant, this was also something that I was tinkering with over the last week. This particular project, I have to say, I'm very, very proud of this project. Myself, Rutland Regional, and Cedar, I forget what their name is, reached out to, I mean, we reached out to the state, some of the largest employers in our state. We talked to the governor, we talked to towns, we talked to counties. We have a huge coalition right now to drop a very big $75 million grant with a distribution center, hopefully, here in Fairhaven. That grant was submitted, and fingers crossed, we get phase one. Phase one is a $500,000 grant to then move forward with phase two. The governor finally did send us a letter of support for our, for our grant going to the feds. I started today, we've been waiting on probate, but I started to work on 12 South Main today. That one's gonna, that property will be going up for sale, November, in November, probably the end of November, I have to post that. We're closing out, so we received three business grants last year, one for Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Durkey?
Yeah, Mr. Durkey, and then there was one more downtown, Mike Davidson, thank you. Durkey's closed out, and Mr. Nelson is now closed out, so they've completed their projects. And then Thursday, another grant project, we have a pre-bid meeting for the salt shed, so we're gonna meet up at, up on-site with potential contractors to review that project. And that's all I have.
Questions for town manager? Old business, we had the dog park permit update. Joe, I mean, you gave that update?
There, that's, oh, we do have, we do have a, the board has a decision to make.
Gotcha, I thought I saw.
So we had to, we had to offer the state a plot of land for mitigation. The original, the original spot was in this, the original proposed spot to offer was right here. This is, this is no longer just grassy, this is woods, and they don't, they don't want woodland, they want, they want wetland. So in front of you, yep, that location right there would be, it's pretty mucky right there, so I would propose to offer that location for the offsite, onsite offsite.
Jeff, do you got?
The only thought, the only thought I had on that one, on the new spot, is, isn't that where the, if there was ever a road put in to, when they were talking about the airport, that was how the road was gonna come in from 22A, I think. So I didn't know if you want to completely block your access from that side with a set aside, or whether you want to go up like northwest a little bit, and just go along the side there? But I don't know how it works, whether, whether these spots are. Do you get to pick your spot or not?
They, so this, we can ask, we can negotiate with them, the state, Jeff, you can't see this, but, so the state kind of put in a shape in this area on the south side of the airport and said, find 1,500 or 15,000 square feet in this area.
Yeah, I saw that email, so...
Yeah, so we, I can go back and ask, I can, I can offer up something towards the north.
More like west, you know, that west side where...
On Lord Portion, on the left, maybe on the west side.
So these, these grassy, the grassy knolls between... So, these, these grassy, the grassy knolls between those bumpouts, Jeff?
Yep.
Those are already, those are set-asides for the salt shed.
Okay, all of them, or can you just go in between those?
All of them.
Three of them or two?
All three of them, all the way, all the way from right here, right straight through.
What about just making a line then, so that there's a whole, that whole side? Just go straight, instead of going between them? Just make that a straight line on that side? I really don't have a problem with the south end, I just wanted to bring that up. If, if anyone thought there would be a reason to access without coming under the bridge, is that's where you're going to come in there?
Don't you think you'd still have room, Jeff, between where the, you know, the trees are there?
Well, you could, I'd say.
I don't know exactly where that ran away.
Yes, I think, I think you, I think you potentially would have plenty of room to go around it. It's just that was kind of the old runway, straight.
Yep.
Dry spot, drier. But the south end, it does get gooey. Joe's right, once you drop off the end there, it's.
Yep, yeah, I almost got stuck right there.
Okay, other questions on the proposed space? An offset. So, they're, they're going to give us a permit for 15,000 square feet, but we have to give them a piece of land that we won't use in the future for any development.
Plus, we have to pay the permit.
It's a wetland offset. Do you need a motion or just our?
I would appreciate a motion, at least that's in the minutes.
I'll make a motion to use the wetland offset that you're proposing here at the south end, very south end of the runway.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol. Any other discussion needed on that?
How, how is this, how are these offsets going to be identified?
So, they're, we're, so should they just want us to take some polls, some stakes, for the sign-out that says, "Do not mow"? Just in front of it. And as we start the construction on the salt shed, you'll see those signs up on the side of the runway saying, "Don't go mow here."
Okay.
And will they enter them on their online database?
I imagine they will, yeah. I don't know what the process looks like, but I could imagine.
So, it seems to me, just as a comment, that if we don't mow, and we don't maintain it, it's going to go to woods, going to go to woodlands. So, they didn't want woodlands, but they're creating infant, infant woodlands. But, that's.
That's what she said, we want it to grow up right there.
Okay.
All right, other questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, that motion carries?
One more question, Chris.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Rod's first, let him go.
I was just going to ask, how are our land records? Are we going to have records that match? Are we going to review the state's records?
I would, so, I've never done this in Fairhaven, but the way I imagine it's going is that we would take these, when they're implemented, and we just put it right in the property file, and say, "This is, you know, this is off-limits", that map right there.
Okay. Well, that map plus the other maps.
Yeah, plus, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, things are forgotten.
Yeah, they're forgotten, and, you know, if we count on the state, if the state makes an error, we adopt their error.
Yes.
And if it's in their favor, then too bad. So, I just want to make sure that we have cooperating files.
Sure.
The question isn't on that, it's before we leave the Dog Park permit update. Just a question, our contractor is backlogged, and it looks like it's going to be November before they can do the, is, because of that, could our contractor say, "Don't, don't bring gravel, don't do anything", but can dogs go inside the fence area? Could we, did we ask the question, or could we ask that question so that we could get a few weeks of, of, some dogs going to run inside the fence? Or what's your?
If the board votes for that, I mean, that would, that would be up to them. But where I stand, I am not comfortable.
Well, it wouldn't be up to the contractor to decide.
So, the state has sent an email and said, "Don't put dogs in there", is what Zipotis said, last email, "Don't put dogs in there." I said, "Okay." I know it's frustrating, and I've said that every time I've sat here and said the same thing. If the board wishes to vote on that, then yeah, you guys can do that. It's your land.
Excuse me, but her boss, who was the one left here, said, "What our permitted uses cannot override the owner's wishes, and the owner wishes to avoid inadvertent violations of the wetland rules. We are not going to inadvertently violate the rules."
So, it's going to town, except for us.
Have you violated the proposed permit yet? I asked you this last email. Have you, are you sure?
Yes. How would we be violating it? We're not throwing gravel down the mall, we shouldn't have.
If you say so. But again, I'm, I would be willing to take the 15,000 and put it in escrow. You're very confident.
I'm saying that too. We have not been.
All right, we're not going to re, we're not going to rehash the whole thing. Anything else for the Dog Park? Okay, moving on.
So, sorry, you didn't decide on that?
We've discussed it last meeting, we're not going to rehash it all this meeting.
What was the decision there? That's all I asked.
The decision, what I, what I understand, the decision is that we're not going to use the Dog Park until we have the permit.
Okay, well, thank you, Glenn.
I have a question. At the last meeting, and maybe I remember wrong, I remember the Town Manager saying that the next day, the permit would be submitted. And now, we're two weeks later, and we find out, no, it hasn't been submitted, so.
I think what we heard Joe say is, it's been submitted, but it's sitting in our contractors, they got the check, they've got the permit application, we've done our part. It's sitting there in queue, and the contractor needs to do their thing for it to go to the next step, and they haven't done their thing. Am I properly?
That is exactly right.
That's, that's what, so.
It would be wonderful if Joe would communicate with us about that. He could have sent us the email and said that, but the last word from him was, "I will submit it tomorrow morning", and that was the day, the day of last meeting, two weeks ago.
And that's what I did.
Okay, and we heard nothing since then. So, the first we heard that, "No, it hasn't gone in", is right now this night. So, that comes as a surprise, because I understand you were frustrated, so. Because we were told that we could use the Dog Park once the permit was submitted. Yes, so. And it's been submitted with the check, so we assume it's okay to use.
Don't make any assumptions. Don't make any assumptions that you haven't violated the permit. Don't make any assumptions that you can't use that dog park.
I wish you would look at the rest of the airport property when you talk about how concerned you are about violations. Yeah, you should.
All right, new business, tax stabilization policy. Were you going to present? I don't know the committee's structure. I know you, Glenn and his committee, you have it working.
Oh, I can, I can intro it.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then Glenn, Glenn and the committee have done a wonderful job. This, this turned out very, 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 very well. So, I think it was two or three years ago, we tried to use the board's select, and tried to use the tax stabilization policy, but it was a little clunky to use. So, Glenn and the EDC proposed to take a stab at making it a little bit more user-friendly. And what you have in front of you is, are the results of, 18 months of work, yeah. It's been a lot.
And what we did is, you've seen this one other time, and we marked it up and took your input from, of the actual policy. And it was to, we had input when we showed it to you the first time about making sure it was clear that it's 50% of the new portion of the assessed value, so we changed those. What we, the committee's been working on quite a bit is trying to come up with an application for tax stabilization, for both commercial and our residential tax stabilization. So, in your package, you'll have a pass at the, at the application. We also, when we reviewed it, oh, geez, I think it was a couple months ago for the first time now, there was some discussion about it'd be nice to have some frequently asked questions. So, we, we put some frequently asked questions together as well, some for residential and some for commercial. And so, that's, that's in, in the packet that you have as well. So, I know we're, we're hitting you with a lot of information at once to digest. Our thought process was, this packet of tax stabilization policy application and frequently asked questions is put together in a packet, and we give, we make up some packets, and we give them to our zoning administrator, so that when someone comes in to get a zoning permit to do something, it's just here, if it's something that you could find helpful, you've got everything you need. Our thought process also was, on the application, we left room so that there's a piece that if you approve it, you, you end up needing to have like a contract. So, you say, "Here's the start date, and this, and all", so we can try to minimize the paperwork, and keep it as simple as we could, was the thought process. So, that's basically what we, what we did. What we'd be looking for, the approval process, is once you fill out the application, it goes back to the Economic Development Committee, and they'll look at it to make sure it's complete and everything. We'll put together a recommendation, and then send it here to the board, and let the select board make a decision on it. Is how the whole process was meant to, to go. Some discussion, when you look at your frequently asked questions, we got into the very end of, of, and looking at the commercial and industrial, and said, "If you approve the five-year tax stabilization, and the person who got the tax stabilization sold that business in three years, would the new owner get the balance, the tax stabilization time?" And we had a pretty healthy discussion among our, our board of, some thinking it would be a good thing to let them keep it, and others saying, "Why would you let them keep it? Let them come and apply." So, we, we had Joe go and try to get us some clarification on that. And you, you want to share the clarification that came back?
Yeah, and, and I think I read it right. It's, so the tax stabilization, it stays with the property, just like, I don't know what else, just like your annual assessment, it doesn't go with you, it sticks with the property. So, that's, that's kind of where that.
Kind of makes sense if a business gets bought or sold or.
So, that's why, when you look at the Q and A, you'll see the very last question is, "Ask that question, and there's no answer", because we didn't have agreement on the answer to the thing. And, "Well, you know, we're going to be coming, sharing with the board, what does, what does the board think?" But.
These are great, I like these questions and answers. Make it a lot easier for the user.
So, will this apply to your new project you're working on?
It will. I've, I've talked, well, if the board approves it, I, but I did talk to Frank, and he's, he's interested in.
Probably the one big change we made to the, the policy, from when you saw it two months ago, we wanted the residential to be like, hey, someone was building a garage, and they could get tax stabilization. And we said, "No, that's, that's, that's a bridge too far." If they were building a garage to run a business out of it, then, then it's a different story than just building a garage to have, have a new garage. So, it has to be apartments or, or a business out of, out of your home. So, that's, and so, where we stand now, and why we brought it here, is to give you a chance, I, I know there's a lot of paperwork right there, so saying, "Hey, let's make a decision", no, that's not fair. But it's just, that's what you have, and, and in front of you.
It certainly seems my, you know, and I didn't read through all the Q and As, or the FAQs, but it certainly seems that if someone comes up with the idea of a new business, so, they haven't been in business, they have no revenue, they have only a projection. It, some of these questions that are required could imply that, that is less desired. It, it, this implies, and it may not, probably it wasn't your intent, because it really doesn't make a difference to me, but it implies that you've got to be established, and that is going to be considered as part of the application. And from my standpoint, I really don't care. If you've got a great idea for a business, I mean, that's, that's how Google was formed.
We, I, great, great catch. We took a application for a loan language and played with it. And when we looked at those number of employees and average revenue, the only reason we, I think we left it in there is we said, "Wouldn't that be neat information to be able to know if you had someone that employed X number, and they, they had this type of revenue stream?" It wasn't, it wasn't intended, so if they look at it and think it's a screen, I wouldn't want it there either.
Well, but I, I see that it's required.
Ah, take the asterisk off.
Yeah, it, it, the asterisks, to me, imply that you better be good with those numbers, or it's just not going to fly.
That's what it says, yeah. For instance, you have to have it, or you can't be considered.
Right, it's, it's needed, and I don't want to discourage the next Google.
We'll take the asterisk off.
Whatever they can supply, I mean, we can ask more questions as part of the, the process. And, and, you know, hopefully, it's good information, but I just thought the asterisks implied too much.
We just take.
It's good, it's good information to get if they have it, but.
We can take the asterisk, I'll go back and, but I'm sure, we can take the asterisk off and the bottom statement, and just.
Yeah, yeah, yep. That would be less discouraging, intimidating.
And we're, and, perfect.
Okay, other thoughts?
Okay, so, so I'm going to build a new water bottling plant or something next to Shaw's, and I come in and I, I fill this out. What, and, and it's all filled out, and I hand it in. What, what are the criteria that the EDC is going to look at to say yes or no? What is, is there a rubric for that?
When you look at page two, Program Eligibility Guidelines, A through D, if you, if you meet those, that's it. Those are the rules.
Okay, so if I meet A through D, I'm slammed up? Or can you say no?
Well, we, D, we leave, at the end of the day, tax stabilization must be approved by the select board by December 31st. And so, if for some reason the select board, even though you've done A through D, and the recommendation is, "Hey, we want to give tax stabilization", we left it here with the select board, could say no, I'd like to think the select board would have a good reason, but they, they could say no.
Yeah, I mean.
Because if they, if they did, that's discriminatory, right?
Well, but the, a tenney town has the right to say, "We don't really, we'd like to discourage that kind of activity." Let, let's just say it's an adult store or something like that. Maybe we don't want to do that. I, I'm saying, maybe.
Right, I mean, there, there could be, there could be the town plan that whatever this is, it doesn't match the vision. I'm, I'm just trying to think.
But that would point them to another piece of land within the plan. But, yeah, I could imagine a small number of examples that the select board would say, "We just don't think that's in the best interest of the town."
But the short answer to your question, Jeff, is the eligibility and the guidelines are, are spelled out for both the commercial, industrial and the residential.
So the front page is just general information. It's not, it's not just used as an approval process?
No, right. It's just the information.
If someone buys an established business here in town, would they be eligible as a new owner of that business for tax stabilization? See any answer to that?
I would think that if they were making improvements to the property.
Only new value, I would believe.
Yes, new value.
Again, going back to, I, I would bring them back to the policy of where it says.
Improvements to a site greater than 10%?
That's correct.
I don't know. Okay. I'm just thinking when we were talking about business coming to town, that would be a, a good incentive for someone. But if the business is already there, then.
I'm, I'm, when I look at the policy, new commercial industrial buildings shall have 50% tax stabilization for five years. If you're new and you think, and you want tax stabilization, fill out the application and let the process. Cause what, what may happen, we were talking in the committee about it, is saying, I've got a business that, that the person who bought the business came in at a hundred thousand, for example. And they sold the business for 200,000.
We lost Jeff.
Yeah, I, you probably can't have a answer to every possible thing out there.
But the, the new, the reason the new was set, set aside from the improvements because we wanted people to buy, whether they're building new from scratch or had an existing. See, what they're usually getting is the, the existing floor space, but they're going to modify it to be whatever it is they want to, business they want to have there.
We should think about that because if someone's buying an established business for the town, it's better that the business get bought than just vacated or closed down.
Skyline.
We'll see.
And a new business could come in and buy a property for a lot less than assessed value.
And the thought process on this again was this should be a living, breathing document. We're going to learn, we, we probably, there's things we didn't think of. What we wanted was something that was easily understood, easy to apply, easy to administer. So we would get business.
I think all, I think this meets all that criteria.
Did we review these, the, the concept against other towns?
We, there are other towns that use apartments. We go a step further in, when it comes to business, businesses out of your home. Most other towns haven't touched the idea, even though everyone talks about businesses out of your home.
I, I was really speaking towards the 50% or, you know, three years, five years. Those concepts are, are, is, is this concept taking us out of play? Because, and I'm just using fictitious, just like I'm thinking this stuff right off the top of my head. Castleton is at 70% for, for six years.
We, we did, early on, we did an Excel spreadsheet of everybody that does any kind of tax stabilization. And this is far more lenient than almost everything out there. A lot of them, they, the amount of improvement you have to have and everything is so much higher that most people are businesses unless you're one of the big, the big businesses coming in, you wouldn't even bother.
Less consistent with this entire state of Vermont.
You wouldn't even bother. So when, when we did the Excel spreadsheet against everyone, this one right here puts us ahead of the, the pack.
All right, um, what's the direction? Do we want to take, take a couple of weeks to look at it, review it? Is there major changes or do you want to? I didn't see anything major on a.
I, I just don't want this document or the process to turn away business. I want it to encourage people and encourage, like I keep on saying, the next Google. You know, the, the, the great ideas that are not really fully formed yet. The, the real, the opportunities. So that was my concern. And then also the, the concern of is, are we actually inadvertently taking ourselves out of play? But if, you know, if we've looked at it and it's, it's not taking us out of play, I'm, I'm good with it. We've, we've always had a tax stabilization, stabilization policy, but it was, the words were clunky. So if this makes it better.
I agree. I'd like to get going on it.
I make the motion to approve that tax stabilization plan, the policy, along with the applications with the recommended changes.
Is there a second? A motion by Rod, second of my care, able to approve the tax stabilization policy along with the application forms as changed.
With changes.
Questions on that?
Well, now I have a comment. I just wonder if on this page where it says residential in the heading and on the backside, if that is a little bit misleading. It, it talks about apartments and that sort of thing within it, but you might think if you were building a new home or something like that, which isn't eligible.
Commercial versus residential property.
I was, I was using, we, we can clean that up. I was, we didn't go with a lot of specifics because the policy itself, when it says residential, spells, in the, in the policy.
Policy.
When it talks about the residential, it spells out the.
Residential for business.
Right. That residential is for businesses, for home, business or apartments.
It's not just a home business, it's, yeah, it's also living space.
Yep.
We use the example, and we can, anything to clarify. I'm, I'm all for clarifying stuff. That if someone wanted to say that I, at my kitchen counter, I, I will sit and answer phone calls and do my Amway. So that's my, I want to new redo my kitchen and that's my business. No, it's not, I'm not going to get tax stabilization.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. All in favor of the motion? Yeah, Carol's saying. Okay, all in favor? All right, that motion carries. Glad to thank you on the committee, everybody else for working on that.
The, the committee did a, a great job.
There was a lot of work done. They, they worked hard. It is, it's very, it's a very solid.
It was on the committee, just so we can give them credit.
There were, um, Deb Valen. No, 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 I mean, it didn't, there, there was Deb Valen, Cindy Pritchard, Judy. And Judy brought, brought so much with, with us because of her experiences of working with her, her daughter and her son-in-law down with the Oddicreek Brewery. Of some, some of the frustrations of trying to figure out tax stabilization, it was, it helped us quite a bit. And then Joe and myself.
All right, um, energy committee. Looks like Chris is here to represent the energy committee.
I am. I think originally we were scheduled for 8:30 and Bob and Neil felt that was too late. So they sent me by myself. We wanted, we're trying to make this quick. We wanted to do a couple, just three things. We wanted to explain what we've been working on, share some recommendations that we have for the board and ask where you feel we should focus our attention in the future. One of the first things we tried to do was identify areas in town with high energy consumption and look at how we've been doing over time. And so from the Fairhaven Hydro Project from feasibility study, they had the data in here from 2010. So what we did is we took the numbers from 2010 and compared them with 2020. You can see them on the board up here. Three things I wanted to say about those. First of all, this is not the only areas where we spend on electricity. But this is the area we had data on in 2010. So that's what we focused on. Secondly, I, I can't guarantee that these are all carved in stone because I admit I was watching the Red Sox when I added up every month. And thirdly, we don't really have any reason as to why they increased or decreased over time. It may be COVID related, it might not, but we didn't really find any significant changes within that 10-year period. You know, you can see like Inman Pond was down, I can't read it from here, about a thousand dollars. At first I had it with kilowatt hours and dollars for each year, but that just got too, too many numbers. So we, we just decided to go with dollars spent. So you can see over the 10-year period, things have remained pretty much consistent. I don't know if you have any questions on that. So that's what we did there. The next thing we did is Aaron was nice enough to give us some time and he took us to the, down to the town garage and gave us a tour through there. And a couple of things that we would like to recommend to the town is some of the panels on the door are, are in bad shape and need to be replaced. So that's one recommendation we would have. We also spoke with Dan Gray about the possibility of replacing the lights with more efficient lighting, but Dan felt that because it, it probably is going to be replaced within four or five years, that the, the payback would not be there. So in swift, the savings we would have on LED, we wouldn't make up in that four or five year time period. Although Dan did recommend to us one thing we should really consider doing is looking at the light on, out on the flagpole. He referred to it as a, an energy eater. He had changed the bulb on it before. He felt we could, we could get a more efficient lighting system on the flagpole there. So that was one thing we thought we should do. Then Aaron and Mike met with us up at Inman Pond and we went through the building there. And there were a couple of things that we, we thought we could do to save energy there. First of all, Efficiency Vermont, an organization, they do a free energy audit. And if there are things that we can save money on, they can even help with the financing of those. So we thought that was kind of a no-brainer. It's not going to cost the town anything. And they would look at the heating system, they would look at the pumps used and that kind of thing. Another thing we, we recommend is, I don't know when the building was built, I, I think in the 1960s. In the 60s, huh? And we thought that possibly we could benefit from an energy audit. So I have a list here of 10 companies that do that kind of work. This would be structurally on the building itself. And they range from anywhere from about 500 to a thousand dollars to have them come and audit the building and see where we can make improvements there in terms of energy. We also, also thought that it, the, there's a data cabinet. We thought it would be more efficient if that was replaced with digital. Could be done right on the computer and we could save energy there. So that's the next thing we looked up at Inman Pond. We also, if you, on the first, you don't have to go back, Joe. But you probably noticed the amount of energy we spent on, the electricity at Inman Pond. I think it was like 10,000, 11,000 a year. So we talked about, Aaron got us the square footage for the roof. And we looked into the possibility of solar panels on the roof. We talked to one company in Rutland and they felt that if we just use the rooftop, we could generate enough electricity to, it would cut our energy consumption in half. That would cost anywhere between 90 to a hundred thousand dollars. Neil came up with a, a funding source and we actually wrote a grant, but we never submitted it because we found out that the town of Fairhaven already had a grant application in with that and we didn't want to jeopardize that. So we kind of put that on the back burner for now. But it was a, a thought that we had. And another idea we, we briefly talked about after the hydro, or up at the Inman Pond was, we just briefly, we didn't speak to anybody, we looked online about in-pipe generators. Where they now can generate electricity by any pipe that moves water. I know that, and I don't know if it's in Still District there, but there's a leak in the tunnel coming down from Inman Pond down to the plant. And so we would like to recommend that when the town does address that issue, if we could also look into an in-pipe generator. Two other, and these generators can also be in a water supply without affecting water quality at all. So there's three areas of town we thought would be interesting to look at would be water coming down from the pond into the plant or the pipe coming down into town because it's gravity fed there. And the third place we looked at, well, on the topographic maps down at the sewage treatment plant, we estimated that it's about a 40-foot drop down to the river. So that might even be another future site that we could look at. We didn't, we didn't, obviously it's too much going on at that sewage treatment plant. So we, we didn't even talk to the folks. On the hydro project, Jeff Cochran notified, I think he, we got it from you, Joe. He was going to, he's from the Agency of Natural Resources and was going to measure the water flow of the river in August. And we notified with him and we'd asked if we could meet with him. But because of the high rains in August, they felt that the river flow would be abnormally high. And so they canceled and we asked when they reschedule, if they could let us know. So we could meet with them to discuss that. Another thing we looked at was Joe let us know that the state has set aside $10 million in the, for low-income energy projects. And they sent out a request for information about how to set up the GRAS program. That's being run by Andrew, Andrew Kerplek, if I pronounced his name right. I spoke to him on the phone and described the project and he was very much interested in the project. What they liked about it was that our project has no future administrative costs. So for example, he explained to me that someone had proposed a large solar project and low-income people could buy into the, into that solar array. But there would be a, an administrative issue down the road and they wanted to avoid that. Where in a town like Fairhaven, the money would just go right to the project and there would be no future administrative costs. So we, we filled out the, the committee filled out the request for information, sent it in and we haven't heard anything back and hopefully they'll notify Joe when that application is available. So that's what we've been up to and we would just like to know, just sort of have some direction as to where you think we should focus our attention. For example, would you like us to contact Efficiency Vermont? Or would you like us to contact some of these other companies that do energy audits? Or would you just like me to give that to Joe and how do you want to handle that?
I mean, definitely Energy Efficiency Vermont. I mean, we pay a lot of money on our electric bills from the town and other organizations. We should get, take advantage of any of that we can. And I know they'll work with you. And I know they'll work with you guys on like some of the fixture replacements, light replacements. They, I know they have a lot of rebates on that too, right?
Right. Well, do you want, do you want us to look into that or how do, we're not really sure how to proceed. We're just, it's the first time through.
Yeah. What do you guys think?
Well, whatever is done, it has to be coordinated. Because if the audit takes place on a day that our people are just not prepared to do the audit, do the show and tell, then just wasting time.
I think if we get too many people involved, that's.
Yep. At least not, if it's not coordinated.
Correct. And we just felt our role was to recommend to the board, not to actually take the responsibility part.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I look at your energy committee and you're the arms and legs of this select board. So when we look at things like in-pipe generators, that's, that's something I would expect you as an energy committee to go out, research. What's the cost? What's the cost benefit analysis? What's, what's out there for? And, and come to us with a proposal to say, here's what we'd like to do. I mean, because it's, I, I think, taking one more thing and just throwing it, because you throw it to us, we'll throw it to Joe. Joe will say, wait a minute, I'm doing, I've done a ton of projects already. So anything that, as an energy committee, you can take, I like everything I'm hearing from you. The, the solar on, the solar on, on top of the water pump, okay? What is, what does that mean? What's out there with Efficiency Vermont? What's the true cost that it would cost us and what's the true payback? Those things, that kind of work would be helpful for, for me, I guess.
Definitely.
But you're, I think you're looking at the right stuff.
I, I think the solar on the rooftops, I mean, I would see that the public works, if they get a new building, it's going to have solar on the top.
I think also, I forgot to mention that, I think it would also require we'd need a structural engineering study. I think, I think the number they use is about five pounds per square feet on the roof. So, you know, there's other costs, there's other things like that we, that would be involved that we'd have, we'd have to do.
Well, but I think the, I think I heard that the solar was kind of stepped back from because there's maybe a conflicting grant application. So do we have a grant application out there for solar on a rooftop?
No, it was through Main Street America.
I think it was the lighting, it was.
Oh.
The cameras in the way it was submitted prior to.
We didn't want to, we didn't want to compete with that. So we, we just thought, well, we'd take a step back and look for another source.
So that grant opens, I think the next round has actually opened already, so it's possible to submit.
And, and what would be, can, can we do? And, and can we do both solar as well as an in-pipe generator?
Oh, sure.
And, you know, I think the bill up there is big enough.
And there's also, there's ground space up there also available. Although the person I spoke with over at the company in Rutland said that it's becoming more difficult to get a permit for ground solar than on a rooftop. I don't know the reason why, but once you have the solar panels in place and the hardware is there, then adding panels down the road is less expensive than the original cost.
Well, knowing the people that are on the committee and the energy committee, I think these folks have a lot of energy for the energy committee and passion for those things, so. I'd say keep it going.
Well, I did forget the most important recommendation. On the hydro project, it's our understanding that the town owns the dam, but we don't own the land where the spillway comes off. So our recommendation would be that we have as many things in place as possible ahead of time if the grant becomes available, so we're that much closer to a shovel ready project. So we would recommend to the board to begin negotiations to purchase that property.
How much property do we need?
I don't, I think it might be in the feasibility study. It's not a large amount. It's, if you stand on the bridge over up and you look down at the dam, it's down over on the right hand side. It's not a big portion of the land.
The actual substation for the dam, arm, arm is still there. That little building is still there.
I think there's a lot of history there and I'm not sure the title is totally clear on it. But I know when I was on the energy committee a long time ago, there was some work done on it. So there might be in the file, at least a starting point of where to, where to go with that conversation. But I think although.
That would be our major recommendation to the board for the hydro project. So that would, if the grant becomes available, we'd check off as many boxes ahead of time as possible.
I think probably the first step is for Joe to kind of look through the file there. It has, it might have even been when Rod was town manager at one.
No.
No, it was after that? After that?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the time? Do we know the approximate years to now?
January two thousand and ten.
It might be even like Chris said in the report there, it might. Does it know anything in there, Chris, about?
I don't remember seeing that. I can, I can read.
Probably know.
I probably would know, yeah.
It's not a large piece of, I remember seeing it on a map.
Gotcha.
Somewhere.
Well, even background, ownership, all that stuff of, current ownership, all that stuff.
Yeah, I can dig in and see what's, what's going on.
I, just in the back of my mind, while you're, while you're, one of the things the energy committee could do. There was some concern about our substations and whether we had the capacity, if we could do all the power generation. Do we have the infrastructure that's not within our control? We can, we could go and look at land. But the last time we had Green Mountain Power in here and they said, well, until we do an upgrade, I haven't seen them move an inch in two years since they, they, they said that. So I believe unless someone else pays for it, I'm, I'm not holding my breath. So again, if I'm looking at what you shared with me tonight, I'm going, top priority for me would be solar and in-pipe generation. And that hydropower that we keep bumping into the wall is number three on my priority list because there's certain things totally out of our control that even if we put it in place and build it, I don't know.
We could sell it and get it out. Well, see, the last time Bob was here, there was a discussion that, where he said that they contacted Green Mountain Power and all of a sudden they did it about face and there was plenty of capacity. And I was like, well, that's a complete about face. He's, yeah, I know it is. So.
I'm just worried that every, every time I go down the hydro hole, I, I, I look at a spin in our wheels and put a ton of energy and, and I'm, I'm hoping that I want to send you in a direction to be successful.
Why, I, if we do a land purchase, I would like to at least purchase that land through savings in, in, in other energy venues.
That we were able to get, right.
Yeah, so that we can, so when we tell the, the taxpayers, we'd like to buy this land for X number of dollars, whatever it is. Okay? We're doing that with savings because we've got, we're doing this other project that is going to save us on a fifty or hundred thousand dollar energy bill. It's going to save us X percentage and therefore we're prepaying down. It, it's just something that we can tell the taxpayers. It's not, it's not all new money.
Exactly. We have revenue coming in from our new charging stations blink. We have the, behind the transfer station, some revenue coming in there to be able to utilize.
Revenue or savings.
Or savings, right.
Well, we had this conversation with Joe and I, I don't know how many times we, we thought the hydro project was dead, but it just, over the years, just keeps coming up over and over again.
Part of that is due to the energy, in the energy committee. I mean, that's Bob's pet project.
We just don't want to let it go.
Understood.
Feasibility, I think it seems to be far away at times, but you never know.
It, but it's, it's the request for, let's pre-buy this land. That's the newest request. Let's pre-buy this on the chance. But it, it, and it's, the taxpayers, I think, are getting a little tired of hearing about a project that is, seems unreachable. So why do you keep on throwing more dollars at it? But if we can say, it's not new dollars. We're, yes, we're putting money towards it, but we're doing it through savings or new revenue.
Oh, I understand.
And I, I would, I personally would like to hear more about the in-pipe generation through the, the, maybe throw some darts at locations in town. Because of drop and geography, this would be a good location and that would be a good location. You know, it'd be nice if it was right there at the tank because then your, your infrastructure get, to get the power back up to where it's got to be is not that much. But I'm not sure, I, I don't know anything about in-pipe generation, so I don't know how much drop you need. And there's certainly flow out of that tank to get towards town. I'm not sure. I think we looked at in-pipe generation from the pond to the plant and Bob looked at that once before and he said there's not enough flow.
Well, I think the drop wasn't enough.
Right.
I think it was nine meters short.
Okay. But the concentration of water coming out of the tank towards town may be a different.
A different story.
A different story. However, you're going to disrupt water flow for, to get the, to get it in there, but I don't know what that means.
Can you put it, can you put it in the pond with water?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what he said earlier, Jeff.
Okay, I missed that because that's new information.
Right.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah. And there was some low hanging fruit. You talked about the, the doors and the garage doors and the light on the flagpole. I'd be looking at those and saying, boy, if those, if we can get some energies and some savings, maybe those we can just, we can pick away.
If those fixtures are even as rebates on Efficiency Vermont?
We'll look at every saving we can.
I, I really like the idea of getting an audit done. At least then it would give us a direction. You know, instead of just saying, well, maybe this or that, just pay the guy five hundred, five hundred bucks. Tell us what we need to do and we can pick at it over the years.
Well, Vermont Efficiency is free, so. I, I just, these are the numbers I, I don't know who I should pass this on to, but these are.
Right, Joe.
And, and I know, I'm looking over at you, Aaron, saying, I, I know that, that it, some of it requires you and your, your people and all that other and that affects, so.
Well, they were very helpful. Took up all the time we needed. We appreciate that.
Okay. Other direction for the committee?
Very good.
All set, Chris? Are you have some direction?
We'll look into in-pipe generators. Focus our attention on that. I just wonder if there's any other areas of town that you, you know, we think we should focus on.
But also the funding for solar. If, if, if what Joe says is right, we have a new grant opening. Same, same grant location, but now it's a new grant cycle. So you, you won't be interfering or jeopardizing the other stuff.
Okay, we can look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Uh-oh.
So I, I was chatting with somebody today or yesterday and the question came up, why can't we pool our, our resources for, for fuel for the town and for the school? And you would know better than me, Chris, but is it possible to look into that and reach out to the school and the town and see if there's a way we can bid, bid on fuel at the same time so that way we can bring our costs down? Is that, is that something we can?
Yeah, so we, we're in second year of a two-year contract at the school. We bid eighty-five thousand gallons a year, so I mean, if we add more on, we could definitely look at it.
Is that okay?
And we're, we're down at a buck and a quarter for this current year. That's what we locked in last two years ago, so.
Yeah. When is the contract though?
Uh, June thirty. This coming June thirty.
June twenty-two.
So it's coming up for the next, next heating season? Yeah. I don't know how many gallons you guys use, but I, yeah. I mean, that's also another.
Yeah, that just came out this week, so.
Yeah. All right. Can we take a five minute break?
Sure.
Quick five minute break. I gotta run down to the, right? Next up on the agenda was the review of the DBW oh-three-oh budget and Aaron's here for that. Do you guys want to give a brief overview, Aaron? Any highlights, any, and then we can go through it if you want.
We'll go through the, the highlights and then it'll be, decide some salary stuff is outside or other purchase services, summer work would be a seven thousand dollar increase to pay for the rental of a roadside mower instead of what we have now. And then in the equipment stuff, increases there match more of the actuals that we've seen at the plate with repairs and consumables for roadwork and such.
What, what's the length of time that you're looking to rent the mower?
I'm hoping to get three weeks out of that. Right now, one week is a pass on as much as we can get. So two weeks, hopefully we can get two passes on everything. We usually try and push it back at least two, two weeks. I'm hoping to be able to afford with that a rental, maybe one week or so of boom mower. So hover railmowers we did from all of these hard spots that we can't get right now. And keep pushing stuff back so we don't have complaints on our roadside. Other than that, the bigger of the stuff is, the stuff that go, I pulled out of mine, for plus, for monies needed for bigger projects in around the Scottville pavement, stuff like that.
Roadwork, Aaron, that's pavement, right?
Outside roadwork, yes.
So we still have that hundred and eighty-five in current year?
Yeah.
And we're going to try to spend it in the spring-ish timeframe and kind of back in?
Yep.
Good.
The hope is to, late May, late May through June, do the paving and then while they're here, we can roll in next year's paving as well. So that way we get an economies of scale and less mobilization.
I'll let you think we should do an overview.
Yeah, all right. Anything else, Aaron? You want to hit on your highlights?
The outside paint, thousand dollars, and Prince, the Second Street, Second Street, Carnardon Street. If you go by that crosswalk, that is the thermal, preformed thermal that we can put down with propane torches ourselves. The intersection along with a thousand dollars. We're hoping to see that last for multiple years. That's where that, the thousand dollars is increased, paint is through the roof and actually the stuff I ordered two months, sorry, two months ago now, I got confirmation late, late last week that they're going to ship it to us now. So we have paint now for next year at this point.
Does it last?
On that stuff has gone up as well, of course.
Is, what's the shelf life on that paint?
More than a year, it's probably two years or so. And all this stuff in the garage that we had.
Crosswalk paint.
That has been a couple of years old. Maybe it is, it didn't see a major lack of improvement.
Do we have a, the, the agitating machine or do we do it by hand or?
We have a mixture that mixes it up by the.
I would imagine there's going to be settlement.
Oh, it's major with that, but that's heavy and solid.
Yeah, right.
Did you say like the winter work salary went down?
That's with the formulation that we used for the five year average of how much money or how much time was spent in that long item and then monies are broke down according to what the next year's, that five year average is. And then monies are broke down according to what the next year's, that five-year average is. So when they come up, will go up and down, it's.
Depending on what the five years before were, okay.
That's the simplest way we've ever, or tried to explain, Chris, go.
Yeah. Glenn has some specific questions if you're done. You're over.
Well, on, you did a good job of saying that that nine, that nine thousand dollars is for the roadside mowing. I was, I was matching up the O thirty sheet that was handed out before as well, where it said the things that, that were taken out of O thirty. So that, it answered two questions when you answered that, it was, because I said, okay, we're not going, four thousand dollars wasn't going to be used because we weren't going to have a tractor and, and so the cost for supplies for the tractor. So is that four thousand dollars that we're not using was, was added, of not using that, or using four thousand plus the, this seven thousand is what it's going to cost? What's, what did it cost us to rent the tractor and mower?
The track.
That's what I'm trying to.
I bet it's two thousand dollars a week. Or, no, sorry, so the boom one is three thousand a week. A regular tractor is pushing a thousand dollars a week. But that's without the mower, so we're trying to find a combination of.
We're getting the tractor and mower to get it done, basically getting it done. Yep, good.
The mower that we're running now is pieces and parts of two mowers that are, I want to believe they're nineties vintage mowers and we put them in ditches. We don't mow, we don't mow golf courses with them, so.
And, and that's all I had there, under the winter work. The ten-ten there, where I, I see the overtime, winter work overtime of nine thousand. My actuals don't show me that, so I'm, what, what do we, what do we, what am I missing, what are we anticipating?
Comp time, I believe. That's the only thing that I, an answer I haven't looked for, and I believe that's where that goes, is it goes back to the comp time.
Okay.
So the guys who said they can cash overtime, it goes to comp time.
But that's in conflict with what the answer for the first line was. Right, when you looked at the average over five years?
Yes.
This is not.
It's not average, no.
That doesn't, that doesn't apply to.
It, it doesn't. That, that number's been, that number's been pretty static. The only reason it's at nine, the reason it's at nine thousand now, is just because back in twenty-one, it was eighty-three, forty, which drives me nuts, so I rounded it up just to.
How much comp time do we have on the books for public works?
I don't know what the total comp time is, I can get it.
Because if this is covering comp time, and we don't have anywhere near that and on the books for comp time, then this would seem privileged.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, it is comp time, but it's also, because comp time is paid out as OT, so.
Right, I understand that, I'm sure it's part, it's, it's, it's a combination of actuals and comp time. But if you just take what Glenn was saying, the historical averaging on actuals and just apply that to the nine thousand, then the difference would be theoretically what you have on the books for a comp time. But if you have nowhere near that on the books for comp time, then that would still be frivolous. I don't know what you have on the books for a comp time.
So for winter work right now, because it gets paid out, what, every six months? It would be almost nothing.
Okay.
So there's, we can go with almost zero, but this is not just comp time. It, it is comp time, but it's also paid out overtime, it's, because comp time is paid out as overtime.
But the paid out overtime, you have actuals to, to review. That's, I'm assuming these actuals.
Include the comp time as well?
These actual, yeah.
They, they include comp time?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's, everything's paid time and a half.
So how, how, I, I agree. I mean, how do you say that you're going to need nine thousand dollars in overtime for winter work? When your actuals, which are a combination of comp time and overtime?
Yep.
And we assume that there's nothing substantial on the books? How do you triple?
No, I was just, and it was more of a question, I, I didn't know how, how we got there, and I'm going, I, if we were going to use the, let's look at historically what we've done approach, I could see the last on eighteen nineteen, we spent seven thousand, sixty-nine, so I'm saying, instead of nine thousand, which is seven thousand more accurate, or we're doing, we're going to do something different, like we, we're anticipating a whole bunch of comp time. And it's, that's what it's going to cost us, okay, that's what it's going to cost us, but I just didn't know.
I think you could cut that, to be honest with you, I think you could cut that to seven and take two thousand. Just, just for historical averages.
And it's still, historical averaging, it's still.
And I still think, I still think you've got some cushion there, if something out of the ordinary with comp time happens.
It's, winter time.
This line.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, isn't it really dependent on the timing of the storms?
Yes.
In the winter?
It's, it's always a crapshoot on winter time overtime, but.
If you get, every ice storm is on Saturday afternoon all winter long.
Yep.
You'll push the ten thousand, and if, if they're always on Wednesdays, you won't stand anything here, so it's just make sure you leave a safe number, seven's too is pretty safe, based on the storm.
I, I, I agree, seven is, is more reasonably safe.
Okay, should I change that proposed to seven thousand? Um, other questions?
Aaron, does Aaron have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I.
So to me, salaries are, you know, they're not arguable in my realm, because if I need to work done, the work's need completed, so.
But we're not talking about salary, we're talking about overtime.
Same.
If he needs overtime, he's going to work.
If I end up over seven, if I end up over seven thousand dollars in overtime, you know, I have to work, the work's done. That's what I have to do, so. I feel that if the board's comfortable with it, we'll do it.
The last time we hit it was eighteen nineteen, and we hit seven thousand.
All right, Glenn, your next question?
I'm good with that section, the next section, Public Works fifty-three-ten, under the PW Building Salary. I, I, that was, I looked at the increase there, and I'm just more of a question. The budget. It didn't make sense that our actual in twenty-twenty-one was nine thousand, then our actual was two thousand two. Now I'm looking at this one here, and I'm just trying to understand, again, looking at what would, what have we historically done?
That might, might be a fair of both of when people put in time sheets and what did catch it through the year was putting in, or working in the garage, the building work versus equipment work. That where that bubble might be off there a little bit.
So you're saying that's a bookkeeping error?
No, that's not what we're saying.
Okay.
Did we, did we add someone, in Public Works, like, I was trying to think in terms of, did we put someone like a mechanic in there? An additional salary is somehow plugged in for doing something. I, I was trying to get the logic of, it seemed to go, in eighteen nineteen, it was four thousand seven hundred, but then the actual went twenty, two thousand two, then the actual went to nine thousand, which was a blip, but then we only budgeted thirty.
Right.
Three thousand five.
Thirty-five hundred, yeah.
I'm just trying to get a sense for, okay, we, is that a number we're comfortable with, or is it?
So all, all of the salary. All of the, all of the salaries in the, in this budget are based on a percentage of use from an average going back five years. So some we may see go way up, and some we may see go down, but they're all based on actual average uses. So for example, you'll see summer, summer work is at twenty-seven percent. It was at twenty-three last year. For Public Works Equipment, it's at seventeen percent now, it was lower last year at twelve, because we weren't spending as much time on the equipment. And we'll see that with all the salaries, though, they seem like they're not correct, but it's, it's a system they've been using for a lot of years.
Winter work probably went down because you're seeing the fourteen percent.
And let's face it, if you, if you pull this salary down, you've got to go up someplace else, because really, it's just an allocation.
That's it, so, so the sheet that we handed out at the last meeting, this will show all the salaries, and then how it was allocated through.
Throughout the different areas.
Yeah, and including water and sewer as well.
You, you changed the allocations, Joe, year to year?
It's based on a five-year rolling, it's based on a five-year rolling average.
Okay, but that's not what he's saying.
No, 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 no. So isn't, the way I understood it is, I could be wrong here, but you have everybody's salary, and then you allocate them to the line item based on a percentage.
Yeah.
So the numbers in the, in the budget are purely academic, as long as the total at the end of the budget is correct.
Yes, as long as all salaries are covered, exactly right.
It does, I mean, it matters, but it's, it's not a huge deal if you, if one is a little over and one is a little under. Don't spend a lot of time on it, is my perspective, but if you're going to, I wouldn't monkey with the percentages between years, because
Right.
That, that's using.
Use five-year average for five years.
Well, that, that's, I mean, we can change the way we're doing it, but that's the way we've done it. That's the way Jim has been doing it for a generation.
But it's, it, but it implies, because when, when that, when it's described, okay, I think, well, jeez, the five-year rolling average, I, we, whenever I've been on board, I've never, no one has ever felt that I, we were, that if, if we changed salary one up or down, that we, there was another salary that had to, that had to be the inverse opposite. Okay, and it just kept on seeming that, well, we keep, we're, we're going to use the five-year rolling average, and we're not going to, that's why I kept on focusing on the twenty-eighty, that just put it all in one lump and make these allocations. But maybe we can't do that, I don't know, but, see, that would make it a lot easier, because then this conversation is.
Because I have this conversation for four, five years now. It's every year we talk.
But, you know, when you describe it as a five-year rolling average, you're not describing that it's going inverse op, inverse opposite is happening, happening somewhere else. It sounds like it, we has to go up, and it has to go up here, but they can't all go up.
No, they, and they, but they don't though, some come down.
Okay, but now, and, and, I mean, I, obviously, I haven't taken that sheet, which I have, right here, and I got to compare it to the budget and make sure I understand that, okay, that we are kind of following the twenty-eighty rule, not, maybe not the way I've been asking for, but you know, it, it's, if we're following it, we're following it.
So we, we just, we take the total wages, this is how much we have to pay people, we drop them into this based on percentage use.
Okay, but also the taxpayers don't understand.
It took me three years to understand, so.
So, so where are you getting a five-year rolling average from?
Jim provided me some numbers, and then the, the actuals from what you're looking at here.
So Jeff, I don't think he's using the rolling average for salaries, he's using the, he's coming up with his percentages by the five-year rolling average. So based on the allocation of work.
Yeah.
Is that where you're?
Oh, okay. That is a confusing thing to me, yes.
Yes.
But I still, for budgeting purposes, it doesn't, it feels like those should stay somewhat flat, and then, then you'd be able to follow through your budget on how things move a little more clearly.
But what if water and sewer is taking, and I know they're not, but what if they're taking now ninety percent of their time? Don't you think that should all be allocated to there instead of, you know what I mean, based in other areas of the budget?
I guess what I'm saying is it's difficult to follow if we arbitrarily move the percentages without, like, I guess I would like to see what the percentage was last year then, so that the number means a little more to me.
Gotcha.
That, that's the problem, you're seeing minus, so like, winter work salary is down seven thousand dollars.
Yep.
But it's probably down because we allocated it somewhere else.
Right.
Correct, that's exactly what happened.
I don't know where it went, yeah, I don't know where it went though. So as a tool, we don't get much out of it.
It's all on that green, the sheet that you gave us a couple of weeks ago, I believe.
Yeah, I see that.
But, but that's not historical, that's just a snapshot in time.
Yeah.
And, and Jeff is saying that it's, it's hard to follow.
It is, for sure.
Well, no, the problem is that we budget differently on all the other line items.
Yeah, right.
So we just all need to wrap our heads around it the same way. So when you go down through, don't, don't look at summer work salary as going up or down, because it's just the percentage of allocation change.
Correct.
We didn't pay anybody more money there.
That's correct, and, and my, and my question wasn't that I thought it was the wrong number, I just didn't, I didn't understand how the number, I have a lot better understanding now, how the number got there.
It, it makes a lot more sense now, but it's still tricky to explain in.
In March.
At the town meeting, yeah.
Yeah, when it's in three or four different areas of budgeting.
Right.
Exactly.
All right, Glenn, did you have a? Greg, did you have another? Got your mid-sense?
I have a, just a general question. I don't understand what Public Works Buildings is compared to Public Works Equipment, so how do you define that, and how does it get allocated?
The garage, work in the garage.
So if it's, if the hours are, happen in the garage, they get allocated that way, and the other is, what does equipment mean?
Equipment is.
If they're riding on a piece of the.
Working on the trucks or tractors or stuff like that.
But that could happen in the garage as well?
The buildings, working on the building, buildings, down there.
Okay.
And that's why there's really not a lot of salary in there.
Because not a lot of hours are put there.
Okay. Others, Glenn, go ahead.
Fifty-nine-hundred hydrant replacement, it seemed like that, that two thousand five hundred was, was a pretty big jump, so we must be doing something differently.
Buying a hydrant.
We're buying a hyd, that's, that's a hydrant, I, I, and it was more, I was just curious, I, I was just, what, it says, I knew we must be doing something.
That is a one hydrant.
That's, that's a hydrant.
What's our stockpile of hydrants, do we have?
Minimal, I think there's one and a half, maybe two left from the last project.
When we take a hydrant out, well, do we ever take hydrants out because they just stop working? Or do they get hit?
So if they're hit, we try and hopefully catch somebody and charge the insurance company for it. That's where I think, that would be, where we have a stock of them would be, because we were able to get one or something like that.
But if they're hit, they're, they're pretty much toast.
Depends on how bad, so most of them, they all have break, they all have breakaway flanges, so they're supposed to break away, not damage the vehicle entirely, and hopefully survive, but I have seen them break away and do stuff underneath with a truck and go down the road fifty feet, and that one is junk. Really junk. The old, or so maintenance supplies of the hydrants is budgeted a hundred dollars, that's about what a breakaway flange kit costs for those. Who live in there every year for, someone bumped it or something, and they never caught up with them, or, you know, something else happened to it that it failed. But machinery and equipment, that purchase right there would be to buy a hydrant. There's two clients that can use some work.
And my last was just a general question, I saw the, the appropriations thing here, but just ignore that, what we're talking about. When I saw the appropriations of, went up a hundred and seven, four ninety-two, and I'm saying, well, that must be the whole budget, not, don't, we're not talking about that?
Yeah, that's the whole budget.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I'm, I'm going, okay, is your.
And that's got to be par. And that's gotta be partial appropriations.
When we, uh, is a piece of that, the reason I wanted to ask the question is, you know how last year we we had fifty thousand dollars in, we asked to, uh, to the voters to do something with? Where do I, because I think we, we probably skimped a little on paving, and I'm saying, I'm just trying to find out where I get the, to get the paving done, where it would show up, or does it show up here?
Also, I'm sorry.
You know how, how, uh, we took, uh, last, last year when we were doing the budget, we cut, you normally ask the voters in March to give us fifty thousand extra, to do some extra paving, and we took it out.
Yeah.
If I wanted to put the fifty thousand back that I stole last year, where, would it show up somewhere here?
Yep, that would be in, that would be in appropriations.
Okay, when we go and do appropriations, okay, I just didn't know if paving, because I, some of the hundred and eighty-five thousand, there's probably some paving in there.
One of the ones is for you saying throw fifty thousand on top of that one eighty-five, and we did cost a little bit.
We we, we skimmed you pretty good, I just wanted to make sure if this wasn't the place I found the place.
Spring coming up, then one eighty-five is all spent, so last year I'd asked you to go to, from one eighty to one eighty-five, so I would do some, um, crack ceiling to preserve the good roads we have. This budget cycle with the paving, I'm gonna do all that, one eighty-five with paving alone, so crack ceiling got passed out the window again. I would ask, you know, the two thousand dollars we just removed from salaries of winter work overtime, do they, would we have that back to do more work somewhere else?
Can can we put that down with the one eighty-five, add that to the, and make that one eighty-seven, so we can?
Every little bit on that end helps, and that, and.
Doesn't change.
Do ask the general taxpayer, anytime they see new road, that they, they're like grateful, and glad for that, too.
Well, except for that, if they do approve crack ceiling to, uh, to hold value of a current road, that would be a poor decision. It would be a poor decision to put it towards new paving, and forego the maintenance on an existing road, and have that fail faster. I mean, the the whole idea about on the crack ceiling is to keep the road, it, certain roads that are still savable.
Yep.
To to keep them longer, if we keep on kicking that can down the street, then they're no longer a viable road.
Right, that's.
And we're gonna have to pay a lot more money.
You know, we try and plan out our, plan out what we need to do for road work, but that always costs more than we budget. So it's, either I gotta put my plan down to try and do more other stuff, or I I need that help on the budgeting end to be able to afford what we have planned for work. Because this year, um, this spring paving coming up is already skinny, there are a couple roads out of it to try to get it inside the budgetary, and it's thinner and tricky.
So so back to the question, do we take outside road work and take the two thousand that we took out over there, and put the two thou- and make it one eighty-seven, so that we can fix the road? We're not getting the roads fixed, is is the problem, so we can fix. And this doesn't change the two point five that they ended up with?
Two point five, sure, it would be the same.
What do you think?
Crack ceiling is a very cost-effective way to keep our roads in shape, it's not, it's not sexy.
We've kicked it, we've kicked that can down the street a couple, a couple of years now, and we are giving up the benefit that we're going, that we would receive. Uh, you know, doing that today, I say today, you know, near term, is pushing off and getting us a a little bit more, uh, cushion for time on some of these roads. Now, if we don't do it, we just gotta keep on repaving, and it's just, it's killing us. Uh, at some point, you have to bite the bullet and just say, I I don't know, how much did you have for crack paving? Uh, I I wasn't part of last year's budget, so.
The five thousand.
We had, we had five thousand.
Five thousand.
So we were just trying to get a couple thousand.
But it it saves a, probably one or two roads that, you know, we can kick the can down the, the can, can down the street on a hundred thousand dollars of a new, new paving, for, I don't know, five, ten years, maybe more? You you gotta do maintenance.
So can, I'm, I'd like to take, uh, under summer work and take that outside road work, fifty-six, ten, and make that one eighty-seven versus one eighty-five.
For the purpose of paving or crack ceiling?
To be used where, where there's, where they see fit, because we, we, they need it all done, and they're gonna, not gonna have enough money.
But last year's board asked for the voters for some crack ceiling money, and it was given, and now we're not using it on crack ceiling. That's what I heard.
Yeah, but I, but I don't know how to, we don't have a line item for crack ceiling.
So the conversation I have is, when the board asks for a paving plan, I put the paving plan together, now I have to get that road paved, and I don't have enough budget money to do that, I can't, I can't, I guess, say, look, this is as far as it's going after that, that five thousand dollars of crack ceiling. And the the plan at some point will be obsolete, because I will not have kept up on the paving that we were trying to as well.
Rod, if it makes you feel, I I mean, not to overstep, um, but we can commit to crack ceiling. We we can, two thousand won't get us far, but we will do that.
I'm leery about making promises, I wasn't part of the promise, but I'm part of the board.
Sure.
And the board, last board, made a promise, the crack ceiling was gonna be done, and here's the benefit. Um, I think we have to do everything that we can to make sure that's done. Otherwise, the trust of the voters is out the window.
I I will guarantee the two thousand in crack ceiling, I will guarantee that.
Well, we're talking two different budget years, though.
Right.
Rod's talking about the.
The last one's already, the last one's already happened.
But what I heard was, it's out the window.
Yeah.
So now, it it, all we're doing is kicking the can down the street again, and I I don't, I want it, this is my, this is the budget that I'm on the board with.
Yeah.
But but the budget that we said there was five thousand for crack ceiling doesn't run out till June thirty.
I I understand that.
Next year, so I'm, I'm not ready to say, I ignored you taxpayers and didn't use the money, we're, I just heard him say, we're gonna crack seal five thousand.
Okay.
So long as it gets done.
Previously, I heard that that's out the window. I don't want that to happen in this budget, I think the cracks, when the crack ceiling is committed, we do it. We make it sure it happens, because that not only is a promise to the voters, but also it it is keeping, it's kind of like oiling the underside of the trucks. If you don't do it, you're gonna be buying a truck faster.
I agree, I agree.
So at least for a next budget, though, one eighty-seven, we'll we'll allocate that however, right, Aaron comes up with his plan.
Well, I, I'd like to hear if there's crack ceiling in there. Because there is not, like Glenn said, there's not a separate category for crack ceiling.
Correct, it's all included.
It's all in the one pot.
Um, I hear we're gonna do at least two thousand dollars in our next budget of crack ceiling, is what I heard.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
I will, we will guarantee that.
All right, so we're gonna put back the two thousand that we took out of.
The salaries for.
Winter work overtime, we're gonna move that to here to one eighty-seven, okay?
Is there a reason why you can't add a crack ceiling line in here?
There may be a sub-line that we just don't see.
Right, that there's a.
A subcategory, I don't know.
Change outside ditching, and just change your wording on that category and make that crack ceiling.
Yeah, I think you might leave your categories along, though, for historical.
You can add a, add a category.
Subcategory underneath.
These are all subcategories, they they kind of get.
Yeah.
They're noise, we only see the main line items.
Got all my questions answered.
Okay, other questions? Jeff, uh, questions from your end?
Uh, on the next page, uh, we haven't talked about the à la carte stuff too much yet, but, uh, what, what's it mean to fully fund the Department of Public Works Equipment Fund, uh, twenty-two thousand annually?
You're on page three.
Um.
Yes.
Page three of DPW?
Yeah, fifty-three sixty.
No, on his à la carte.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
See, I'm, okay.
Yeah, you're looking at some different.
I'm over, I'm over on the à la carte.
Oh, okay, yep, from last meeting.
From last meeting.
I joked a little bit, but I, I just wanted to understand what that got us.
It's fully funded.
Yep, twenty thousand.
All the rest of them are very self-explanatory, but that one, what do I get for twenty-two thousand annually that I wouldn't get? What does the taxpayer get, that they wouldn't get if we don't fund that?
Did you see that budget I had sitting here? Did you scoop it up, or did I scoop it up?
Um.
Bear with me, Jeff, let me, so you're asking this question relates back to O-one-O, it doesn't relate to 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 the budget we're talking about now. Um, but reserve al- reserve allocations, um, it's sitting at.
I can wait, you can, you can answer another time if you don't wanna.
No, no, I I.
If it doesn't play.
I I have the answer in front of me, if we just had to dig it out. Um, so right now, um, there's only eight thousand allocated for public works vehicles and equipment in the general, for the reserve funds. That twenty-two thousand will bring that number back up to thirty thousand, which, which it was two years ago. You'll need about thirty thousand dollars to continue funding the, um, uh, capital improvement plan. The addition, so the the short answer is that will continue to fund your capital improvement plan where it needs to be.
As presented.
As, yes, as the the current plan sets.
Okay. Other questions, Jeff, are you all set for now?
I'm all set for now.
Yeah. All right.
Well, I'm done with the questions about the the budget line items that we had, but the handout we had in our last meeting, where we had the manager reductions by department proposed budget for O-thirty, just wanted, I had a couple of questions. Uh, the first one was the summer safety equipment, uh, one thousand five hundred to three thousand extra was budgeted for a ditch box that's been removed, didn't we just buy a ditch box?
I moved, I removed the ditch box funding from this budget, because we had.
Because we bought a ditch box, okay. And, um, the summer outside road work, a hundred and forty thousand proposed to increase Scott Hill paving was removed. I just, Scott Hill has been on our list year over year over year, and each time, we don't get the state, I I'm probably over paraphrasing, but we don't get the grant we need to do it, so we patch the patches. So is this a hundred and forty thou- we're saying that if we get nothing, it'll cost us a hundred and forty thousand? Help me understand what that.
The hundred and forty thousand is an estimation of us getting the grant. So if we don't get the grant of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we're still short, so we'd be short one forty plus the one seventy-five.
So my, my question is, when I see that comment, saying that it came out, and it's on the à la carte, are we gonna have one more year go by with patching patches again and not fix Scott Hill?
Yes.
Unless we fund the grant, replace the grant money.
So the, the request was three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in that line item originally.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, with three twenty-five plus the grant, that will get us to Scott Hill.
So you have money to do Scott Hill if we get the grant?
You would still be short the hundred and forty thousand, you, this is what you would need to, that's what you would need to allocate.
See, see what I'm, what I'm trying to find out is.
You shift your road priorities to.
That, that for, I know for four years, we've been talking Scott Hill.
Yeah.
And Scott Hill's no closer, doesn't seem like it's any closer as I'm sitting here today, than it was four years ago.
Glenn.
Yeah.
So I think, I, this is my opinion, but I thought the idea was, you've got a hundred and eighty thousand, but you did it in there. The day you get the grant, everything else goes back a year and you pave Scott Hill.
That's exactly right.
That's the way I understood it.
Yes.
It's not that Scott Hill won't get done, if we get the grant, that, that we're not gonna do it, it's that we're gonna get the grant, and the other stuff isn't gonna get paved.
Okay.
For one year.
But it is possible that we are not gonna do Scott Hill another year if we don't get the grant.
And I, 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 and I see no reason to be optimistic that we're gonna get a grant, I mean.
We get closer every year that we don't get one.
Is this year or next?
It used to be like clockwork, now it's, there's a little bit of flexibility.
That that answers the question I had, that basically says, okay, uh, it's.
Still on the.
Still on a wish list, okay.
Or or you, we could bump that, bump that up and just go.
I'm.
It's a lot of money.
No, it's a lot, it's 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 just something more for saying, it looks like if we're ever gonna get it done, we either have to go ask for money and just go do it, or, uh, and I'm, the infrastructure, ARPA discussions that we need to have going down the road to say, oops, where, here's all the stuff, here's our list, where does it sit on the?
Yeah.
Where's it sit on the list, I'm just, okay.
Hey, we, uh, one thing we talked about, uh, a few years ago, was taking out a bond and pay everything. Okay, and then the only thing you're asking for is, you know, the, uh, the crack ceiling and pay off the bond. And you're gonna do that for, you know, ten years.
In ten years, yeah, so that you can do it again.
Right. Well, theoretically, the cracks, the the crack ceiling will, you know, uh, elongate some of that process, but yes, you're you're right. It, but it, we we talked about that if we could do it right with crack ceiling, we could then, after the ten years, uh, keep going with the hundred or eight, a hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand, uh, a normal paving schedule, and with crack ceiling, we can, we're, we're caught up, and we can, through better maintenance and stuff like that. So it was, that was, that was the theory that we talked about, oh, I don't know, three years ago, maybe?
You gotta think, if the, if the water bond payment is seventy-six thousand dollars a year for six million dollars, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that gets you, that gets you double that, that gets you twelve million dollars with the payment.
I don't think we got paid twelve million dollars in paving.
I don't think we do either. This isn't interesting, other towns.
To do some of the stuff under those roads, too, don't forget about that.
That's true, you're you're absolutely right, it's not a one-year plan, it's. Yeah.
Other towns.
Ten-year, fifteen-year plan, so you've gotta do, you've gotta try to do any water line and culvert that's under that.
Which, which would be, like, when I see Fourth Street, for example, we say that that's what a class two, so you're, you need to get it, you get on another list to wait to go, and all that right there, and I'm saying, realistically speaking, we'll be patching patches and putting stuff down on Fourth Street for a very long time, in my opinion, uh, unless we come up with some other.
Creative financing.
Way of getting there, okay.
So, I just want to throw two cents in there, remember, if we go to bond, we're paying some interest on that same money, that we could very well write a good, proper plan and just pay that money to ourselves anyway.
Right.
Yeah, but.
Some interest on millions of dollars is money that you're doing someone else, or planning that, which are able to do.
But we're talking about trying to get caught up, and and what would it take to get caught up? We can't afford one or two years of five hundred thousand dollars in paving, just to forego a few percentage points in interest. Uh, because, like Jeff said, that there's, there's other infrastructure that has to be touched, too. It's a multi-year plan, and it it's just a creative financing. When when we talked about it, there was low interest rates, now the interest rates are climbing up a little bit. Uh, but if we got another loan similar to the, uh, the the sewer plant loan, where, you know, because of our circumstances, we can get a one and a half, two percent loan, I mean, it's almost free money, almost.
I like the, I like that idea, but it's never gotten traction when I've mentioned it before.
Right.
It seems to make a lot of sense, I mean, you already have the paint. It seems to make a lot of sense. I mean, you already have the payment, you already have the payment in the budget, right? A hundred and eighty-five thousand was a long way towards a ten or twenty-year payment.
Well, I'm pretty sure you could save money in your budget by doing it.
Right. It's just, it's selling it to the voters, having another bond out there, and it's, it's just a replacement plan. You take, you, you go to bond and you just take the money that you've got, a- and it's a same dollar amount every year, pretty much.
Yeah, it, it would be.
It's a, it, it's a way to, to stabilize your paving.
Well, if the board doesn't mind, oh, is it okay if I look into this?
Yeah, see what the rates are.
It just seems to make sense. I, I don't, I don't know what it looks like, but other towns have kicked this around, and I don't know anybody that has ever done it, but, um...
Uh, we, when we talked three years ago or so, Jeff, wasn't there a town that did it, and that's what got us going down that path? I don't know what town it was, but...
I believe, Rowland City is doing it, I believe. They, they did pull a bond.
And maybe it was Rowland City that did it, that, that started us down. Uh, ours would be a, a much smaller bond.
See what it looks like if it's, and if it's, uh, terrible cost, we would have more movement in the direction.
It, it may not be something we can do for the budget cycle that we're talking about, but it's something that we can set up for the next budget cycle, and, uh, it would be great if we dovetailed that into the, into a discussion about the, uh, uh, option tax.
Yes, it would. Yes, it would.
Alright, so with this budget, what, what's the timeline again, Joe? Just for pressure on approval. When do you need this?
Um, I think it is the first meeting in January. We, we need, we need the green light. And that's just because we have to back out when things need to be warned and, and, you know, all of that, so.
Okay. So we're moving forward with that. If you see anything major, just let Joe, let Joe know, but I think we're, gone through it pretty well. Alright, uh, moving on to parking lot. Any parking lot items?
Do we take, um...
Tax stabilization off?
Yep.
That's great. It's been a long time since we pulled something out there.
Okay. Uh, board roundtable? Everybody for a roundtable? I just have one, one request, maybe we can add it on a future, sooner than later future gen item, is petitions for town meeting? Um, what that process will look like, whether they actually need to collect signatures?
This is for appropriations?
For appropriations. I think we should let, so those organizations know what the plan is on that.
Yeah, yes. I'll put it on the next meeting.
Yeah, just so we can...
We should have to do that.
For the, for right now, though, what I've been telling people, when they ask, I tell them, yes, you need signatures, because when the last board voted, they said one year.
Yeah, that's right.
Which had expired, so.
Right, and we ended up with a lot of extra, some extra appropriations as a result of it.
So I, I think we should discuss that, make sure everybody's on the same page of that.
Yeah, I'll put it on for next meeting, dude. I've got a lot of questions, too.
Anybody else for roundtable?
Just, just one, I guess, the, have we, have we fin- fin- wrapped up the Ray Penkovsky thing out on Main Street?
Um...
I hate to sound like a broken record.
They, the answer is no, because he's called me again. Um, I think we need to make an effort. I'm not, not saying we haven't made an effort, but at least go down there, talk with them, see, I mean, I see, I see the issue with those three manholes there. I mean, they're pretty loud, glare's driven over them as well. I, I don't know what the fix is. I know Rod has some opinions on it, too.
Well, my opinion is not how to fix it, but just how to track the fix, and if it doesn't work, you have a record of it. Um, but, so you don't do it again.
I get the same noise in front of my house, and I can only imagine having three storm drains or whatever sewer drains in the front. I think he is getting vibration in his house. I, I don't know what the fix is. But if we get, I, I'd like to let him know that we're gonna at least follow up with him so that...
Sure. Yeah, can the guys go down tomorrow?
Uh, tomorrow we're already scheduled, that's fine. Different move, but I can go.
If you get to him within a week, or, that would be great. Um, anything else, Glenn, that you have?
That's it.
Jeff, do you, or is Rod gonna do the...
I, I guess I, I am gonna do it.
I think I delegated to Rod and started.
You're already delegating away.
Uh, good job.
Make the motion to pay the, uh, payroll warrant for thirty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Second?
Uh, motion by Rod and second by Glenn for the payroll warrant. Questions on that? Is it still staying within that area?
Yeah.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
Uh, make a motion to pay the general fund warrant for one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty-seven and twenty-four cents.
Second?
Okay, motion by Rod, second by Glenn for the, uh, general fund warrant. Questions on that?
That was a little higher than normal, but there were three...
There were, yeah, there were four, four large, um, gravel, Blue Cross, Green Mountain Power, and sand.
Um, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Yeah, that motion carries. Checkbook status?
Don't have that.
Oh, it's still negative one?
I think it's one point. Negative one million, one hundred and thirty thousand, right?
Yes. Negative one million, one hundred and thirty thousand, eighty-five dollars and forty-seven cents.
And that really hasn't changed the last couple meetings, right?
It hasn't. We still have to transfer cash from...
Okay, um, there was an executive session added. Is there a motion for that one?
I'll make a motion, move into executive session under one VSA three thirteen A one for labor relations.
Is there a second? Motion by Glenn, second by Carol, for then executive session for labor relations. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Jeff, you still there?
Aye, yes.
Alright, that motion carries. With the town manager?
With the town manager, yes.